I'm.
While we're making the meeting in the city council of order, if you could please join us in the pledge of allegiance, if I don't pull this thing down. Pledge of allegiance led by Andrew Fraser.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is standing as one nation under a invisible but authoritative decision for all.
Thank you. Okay, first item is councilman report on current events. Councilman Brian Watson, would you like to begin?
Oh, no, not really. I'm sorry.
On the other end?
Please, if you don't mind, then drawing up my account.
The Susan May night.
Who?
Suzanne.
Oh, okay. Yes, I can go if you'd like me to start. I wrote down some things I wanted to say, and I give you plenty of time to think of whatever you're going to talk about. So a couple of things, I am excited to share this with you and whoever else is listening to this. A few months ago, I attended a Westmark breakfast series, and it was on workforce development, and it was a partnership between educational institutions and private industry. And I thought it was really cool because it showcased our Agua Fria academies that, you know, they're getting started and gearing up, and it's kind of neat way of thinking about it because they are able to approach kids that are in high school, offer them kind of these exploration into different career paths at that level so that if they decide to progress in their education, they are kind of already exploring a career path that aligns with their interests. And the reason why it was interesting and kind of cool for a private industry is because companies that are coming here are looking for a workforce that's ready to kind of roll in and staff whatever positions that they have that is beneficial to them because it saves them on recruiting costs as well. And what was really kind of exciting for me in all of this was we have, it's relevant to us right now because we have the Agua Fria Hilltop Academy, the Fine Arts Academy going in, and so all of that is really just kind of neat for our community, that we are able to kind of be in a community where this is offered. Talent is retained in the community, just a lot of partnership there, and I really liked the idea. So I pitched it as a panel for the league conference, and they accepted it. So that's going to be a presentation at the league. I think it's on Thursday, but I haven't seen the league agenda yet. So I think it's on Thursday at 8:00 AM. I'm really excited because, you know, I pitched it, so we get to kind of showcase the academies, Litchfield Park, we're a part of the, we're like the center of the West Valley. So I think something that benefits, you know, the entire community is good for us. So I was excited that that turned out well. I'm really excited about that. The next thing that I wanted to share is when I took my oath of office speech, I really wanted to bring value. The one thing that I think it all boils down to is I wanted to bring value to the city and to our community. And so one of the things that the league is piloting this year is a program called Civic Craft. And I don't know if you guys got the email about it, but I thought I would like to apply for this inaugural kind of program. And let me see, I've got some stuff here to talk about it. It's something that's, you know, administered by the league, and they have, it's geared towards public service. So they have like foundations for authentic leadership. It's a year-long program, ten, ten meetings. And so I'm excited to participate in that and continue to bring value to the city of Litchfield Park and to kind of work with some other city leaders as well. Finally, I'm really excited that we have our director of communications in place. That was kind of a long awaited goal that the city has got in place, and so I'm really excited about that. Thank you for coming and being here. And then finally, I received a lot of comments this year about our Fourth of July celebration. A lot of people were asking if we're going to be doing one this year, and I was happy to tell them, yes, we did one. We had our sparkle in the park, and it was really, I got a lot of positive feedback about it. But I also think it set the stage for what are we going to do for next year? Because it's the 250th anniversary of our country. So I think that people were excited to see that we had something. They were thrilled about it, and they are also really looking forward to what's coming for next year.
Thank you very much. Great report. Congratulations on being picked for the attending the civic leadership program. It's, it's, it was a competitive process. So there's only, there's a limited number of elected officials that are picked. So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Mr. Andrew Fraser, Councilman Fraser.
I primarily want to focus on the Third of July. I thought the city staff and city did a great job. I attended with my kids. You've got a couple that are going to sign up for the pie eating contest next year. Very special part of being a part of Litchfield Park or things like that. The fireworks show was fantastic. I know, you know, we did smaller shells, but I think that everybody that went had a great time. I got a lot of text messages the following day and calls saying, you know, they were happy to have something like that in Litchfield. Again, it's been a long time. There's a handful of people that remember when we used to do something. I have. So again, I think we got lucky. It was, you know, probably the coolest Fourth of July that I can remember in the last 12 or 13 years I've lived here. So kudos to the city and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready?
I am, and unfortunately I don't have a lot, but the Fourth of July was the big one, obviously, and all positives. Did not hear a single negative from anyone. So I think that's fantastic. And I think that our Saturday morning farmer's market continues to be pretty, pretty well attended. Right by every Saturday, and there's always, they're always setting up, and people that are there this Saturday are there the next. So I think that's very good. We're getting some good recognition with that.
Thank you.
Councilor Claire, just to echo the Fourth of July comments, a lot of great positive comments on that. Believe it or not.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have nothing, Mayor. Just happy to be here.
Not going to report on your trip?
No.
I don't have anything to add either, so we'll move on. Thank you for your reports. I appreciate the input of what's going on with you and the city. Okay, next item coming up is the city manager's report. Highlight from your report to send our packet.
I just have a couple of quick things. On my page that here, I think we've done a great job to do while I was going on my pendant vacation. Page did a good job, and thanks to my life insurance, she's hearing me a Zoom. I'll, because she heard that, I appreciate everything she does. Another other point of all the other questions there are, one thing I would point out to you is on the ride share agreement. It's consistent out of the summer one, but I would like to point out how much the ridership has increased. So last year, the costs were actually down, to be honest, we had less riders than we thought we would. However, over last year, they went up drastically. Last year, we had 163 riders, but the year before, 863, and up to 294. So that's a huge increase in one year. And it's interesting that almost all the wheelchair riders have increased by ones that's pretty much the same. But the anti-vehicle riders, people that can get up and get around, it's the one that's increased drastically. So obviously, it's getting around, and we have the service of people using it, and that's what it's for. So that's, that's great news. And even with the, with the increased ridership, it's still at $25,000 a year, which is what we planned in the first place. So it's actually catching up with what we thought it would cost. So anyway, that's great. It's seen that people are using it. It's getting around. That's, that's great news. Thank you for that. There's a lot of items in here that we'll discuss later on in the safety session, but any other question, report wise.
President's counsel.
Thank you.
And this brings us to this meeting. It's called the community, called the community. Do we have any requests to speak? This is an opportunity for individuals to address the council on a non-agenda item. So if anyone wants to address the council on something that's on the agenda, you're welcome to do so. Seeing that, and we'll go on then to the presentations, and we are going to start with my favorite presentation each quarter. It, it is to the employee who has been voted by other of the rank and file employees to be employee of the quarter, who has had the biggest impact on our ability to deliver big services, big services to our residents. This quarter, we are honoring Eduardo Navarro. I'm going to mess this up. I apologize ahead of time. Goro, Goro. Congratulations. We have an award for you, a presentation. It's the plaque, not a plaque, but a certificate. And do this without throwing that table on again. You, as you, I'm sure you understand, because of getting this award, you get to work a whole extra week. Congratulations. Seriously, you get a day off. We appreciate all your service. Okay, this brings us to our report section. Report from first off, Goodyear Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here to report for June and July. First of all, I'll start with prevention numbers for the month of June. In month June, we saw one plan review, one construction permit, and then seven inspections. Of note, our inspectors were 93% of all occupancy within the city of Litchfield Park in the city of Goodyear. So they're doing remarkable work. For the month of July, we saw one special event and 14 inspections. Your emergency incidents for the month of June totaled 61, with 51 being those medical to be in hazardous conditions, six good intent calls, and then two false alarms. Like the ridership increase, probably not going to be pleased to hear that total call volume went up by 13% for the last fiscal year. For the month of July, we saw 67 incidents. Sixty of those were medical, one call for service, three good intent, and then three false alarm calls. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Before we start with questions, let me thank you and your department for serving at the Fourth of July, as you know, festivals that probably pre-festivals. It was really important that we have a safe event and not burn, burn anything down as though as we have tried to do in the past. But we appreciate the fact that your guys were there, and I'm sure contributed to the fact that the fireworks came off safely and everybody had a good time.
Yeah, it was a great event, you know, without incident. Of note, we're going to have our 9/11 practiced on September 6th, that fire station on Litchfield Road. We'll be sending information over to city manager.
Right. And I just, I'm not sure if I misunderstood your, what you said earlier. Did you say there are incidents, our incidents this year came down?
No, no, sorry. They went up. So like the rider tip went up. It's so good at our numbers. As much to be fair though, with that number interest.
The report that we have in our packet says that in 2324, we had 934 incidents, and last year, we had 834. Then last year, it was 894. So I mean, the, what the information we have here is that it went down, unless I'm misreading this.
No, you're correct. I, I pulled the wrong year. So good news to report then.
So we, we only take good news. That's what I was hoping. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Thank you for your report. Just thank your guys for the service they give our community.
We're proud of them. Thank you.
Next up is the Avonale Litchfield Park Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, Mike's mayor and council members. How's everybody doing tonight? Manny Rios, I'm a patrol lieutenant, and I'm back overseeing the city Litchfield Parks Patrol Team. So here to present stats for the month of June and July. In the month of June, we had 428 calls for service compared to 274 from last year. That was a 69% officer-initiated percentage and 31% citizen-initiated calls for service. Our team did 45 speed zone details compared to 23 for June of 2024. Our team did 141 traffic stops compared to 34 for June of last year. Forty-four citations were issued compared to 14 for 2024. Eighty-six business checks were done compared to 59 for June of 2024. We had a large increase in total calls for service compared to last year, but that comes from our large increase in traffic enforcement, mainly along the Camelback corridor area. Also in June, we also participated here in this very building for the citizens' Leadership Academy that the city hosted. I think there's about 15 participants. So myself and some of the officers presented what our police department does in conjunction with the city and the partnership that we had. In July of this year, we had 542 calls for service compared to 238 for July of 2024. 65% of those were officer-initiated, while 35% of those were citizen-initiated. We did 33 speed zone details compared to 25 for July of the following year. And this last month, our team did 263 traffic stops compared to 30 for July of 2024. Seventy-one citations were issued compared to six for July 2024. Eighty-two business checks were done compared to 54 for July of 2024. The reason for the increase in the traffic stops, we have a new team, so we have new officers, and we told them that one of the main issues that we want to address here in the city of Litchfield Park is the speeding. So that's why they're out there. And as long as calls permit, you'll see our guys and gals out there doing that. And also in July, we also participated in the, for the Fourth of July celebration. So thank you for letting us be a part of that. And we had nine officers that worked that detail to ensure it was a safe environment for everybody. So we look forward to continuing our partnership with you guys, and I'm willing to answer any questions that you guys may have.
One second. I want to thank you also for, for your department's participation in the Fourth of July. Having adequate safety precautions for the crowd of people who came, for, you know, for the residents and others that came to the facility, they're, came to our park to see this, was the start of most in the decision to have this. It was a very big concern that we are bringing together a large number of people in an environment that is, it can be dangerous. So we appreciate that your police, the police were there and that they, they were, their presence was noted, and I think it helped the whole process go smoothly. So thank you very much.
It's our pleasure, sir. Thanks so much.
Well, no.
I just wanted to express my appreciation to the police department. We had, I feel like there was, it was a busy time on our street these past couple of months, and I just want to say that I appreciate the response time. It was always very quick. And in fact, somebody had taken out, once some of the light comes, came speeding down the street, took out some of the palm trees, and the officer responded so quickly, and they were like, it was, it was just really appreciated how quickly they responded. And I will say that every time I come out onto Camelback, and they're sitting right there, it always gets me. So it's a good place to set up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, the report says there were no flock alerts for the two months. That's extremely rare. Is the system down?
No, sir, that is very rare. Litchfield Park has produced zero flock alerts for those two months.
We usually got somebody who's registered to drives in and out, and we could get something on that. There's.
Nothing at all.
Nothing?
No.
Maybe it's working.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Thank you for your service. Thank you guys for their service for our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, it brings us to our staff monthly report. We have paid via Zoom for the finance report.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight in person. The finance report is included in your packet. I don't have anything significant to report on other than this is a preliminary June report, and the final will be completed after the audit is done this fall. And I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions from council? Hey, no questions. Well-prepared report. Obviously, got all of our points across without confusion. So thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item up with Mr. Durinsky is the contamination and plume update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our report is in your council packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions, concerns.
Questions from council?
I did note that the, I think you said the end of July was when we were supposed to get results on the first wells from Luke. Have we gotten any indication when we're going to get those?
Thank you, Councilmember Fraser. As a matter of fact, I got the phone with Luke Air Force Base at about 3 o'clock today. They sent us the first round of findings. Didn't have time to put it into a presentation. I'll be happy to bring it to the council next month. But the summary is they did find PFOA and PFAS in several of the wells. They are at the above four parts per million. The very interesting thing is that they started to identify the flow direction of underground water. And in some of these areas, it goes north, it goes south, it kind of does a big circle heading towards the Agua Fria River, going up to the area where the waste water treatment plant is by Glendale and circulating kind of near the base. So they're going to do another round. Well, they did another round of sampling, and that'll be in the next month's report. So I'll try to get it all in one presentation. I did do some follow-up inquiries, you know, what does this mean for us? What are the next steps? Obviously, the groundwater is a concern. Liberty Utilities is, they have been for years moving forward on filtration and identification. Liberty has also told us that they're seeking legal revenues towards contaminator, which is the base. So that'll help if they, they go after that and get through with it, they'll get funding to do more filtration and good treatment. The base does plan to do additional monitoring wells to identify the plume location. So a lot of the signs that I'm seeing, they're going to do a lot of the similar things with PGA North and South to the south of us. So they're in phase one right now. They're going to do a phase one, which is additional wells and identify additional limits. Phase two is where they seek, start moving into tightening, tightening up the plume and treatment opportunities. And then there's additional phases after that, as we experienced with PJ South and North. So we do have, unfortunately, the wells that were drilled, which are several on Camelback, there's some over there by Bullard Wash and Kingbat. There was the one at Diceart in Camelback that actually was the highest reader. We have the Green Belt along Diceart Road that also showed up with some PFAS contaminants at various levels. So some of the monitoring wells went down 100 feet, some went down 150, and some went deeper than that. And all different strata reported back some contaminants. On top, to piggyback off of that, PJ North is also, and it went full steam ahead with testing their wells with PFAS and PFOA. We haven't got those results all the way up to the south end of the, of city of Litchfield Park, but they are finding some of the wells that have that as well. That could be contaminants from Luke that passed Litchfield Park and into their wells, and not necessarily from the Goodyear Airport, but they're in the identification stages right now.
Might be, it might be a silly question, but so we have contaminants. Liberty treats the water. Are they not testing the water or they push it out to make sure that this limited ore gets to the citizens?
Good question, council member. The, so they do, they, it's kind of two-stage sort of coming in and going out. So a fair amount of, from my understanding, they, they don't freely, Liberty doesn't have to or freely share all their information on all the wells that are filtered, filtered. I know that not all of them are, and they have a big network. So presumably, some of the unfiltered and untreated wells are connecting to some of the potable. So they, at each well, it does have filtration to do the incoming and outgoing. And then they have routine maintenance on their actual filters. So when they're, they're taking them out, and they're disposing, putting new ones in. So then they also do routine testing of their actual, the water in the pipes throughout, because again, they have several wells that are connected that aren't filtered. And from my understanding, from talking to people at Liberty, it's acceptable limits. It's below the MCL of the four.
Just so the water they're delivering to us is within acceptable limits?
Yes.
If you're on a raw well, then maybe there's a more of a risk.
Absolutely. Especially if you're in the containment zone in the plume area that's being identified.
It would be, it would be, I think, advisable for us as a city to get more formal confirmation that all the water coming into the city, all of the, coming to our residents are all, has all been filtered. And, and or that it's below the, at least below the current standards, which I, as I understand, current standard, standards are, they were taken down, but now the, the tighter standards have gone away for a while. But we need to have something, I think, more formal than just conversations over the phone with them. And at the same time, I think the, you know, the, we need to get our attorney involved with determining whether the fact that we now have test results from the air force that say that there's, that there's contamination, whether we, whether we actually can have, whether can we either, do we have rights or can we establish rights to the ACC to get a formal response? So because the responses that we've had in the past, in meetings, has been that they do filter quite a lot of water, but they don't filter all of it. They were not willing to guarantee that everything was below, below the standard at that time. At least that was the impression. So I think we need to understand what our rights are as a city, find out what, you know, how, what, what can we get from, you know, from Liberty in a friendly, in a friendly process? And what, if it's guest-to-guest friendly, then what are, what, what can we do to establish rights in a more unfriendly process? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Is it worthwhile for staff to look into cost of maybe doing some random sampling of tabs around our city to find out what we, what they're actually delivering?
I mean, we could certainly do this. It's, I think it is difficult to get, it's a testing, the contest, the PFAS, because it's a, it's a hard, it's a very low standard, and so it's difficult at times to find a way to do that. But I think that's a good idea to direct staff to look into it. So what do we have to do if we want to start testing some of the, some randomly testing some of our residents?
Including our lake water. Maybe the lake wells, too.
Well, the lake, well, you know, we can test that. That's, we could probably have PFAS in the lake. Yes. Probably, we probably should expand. We do some testing in the lake now. We probably should just add PFAS to it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we do have some results from the PGA when they went out and did some initial sampling. It did show that there is some in our land. And we do have a consultant, they're creating associates, they used to give more formal presentations there. One of my own calls, I guess you can call consultants, we can have them do lab test, point source test as well. The tricky thing, Mr. Mayor, was kind of hitting on is when the number gets so low, it's such small material that a lot of times doesn't show up. It's really hard to even get up to the four parts per million. It's almost unreadable half the time. So that's the tricky part of it, my understanding.
One more? Yeah, please.
The Litchfield Naval Air Facility closed in the early 60s, the Navy base, the Goodyear Airport. Is there any indication that some of that chemical came from the Navy base? Or is that, that come along after base was closed?
Mr. Vice Mayor, that's, that's kind of what PGA North is doing right now. So there, that's why they instituted the PFAS in the last year. I think I've seen a lot of correspondence between EPA and the crane company about, because obviously, the crane company is responsible for mediation and finding out what they should put into the ground. So they started that up in this PFAS, the, the, the testing for it. They're going to kind of do a smaller version of the big plume evaluation, find out where and how far north, because right now, you've got, you come from the north, and you've got the south contaminations. And, and who knows if they come together, or if there's a clear separation delineation, or did Luke come so far south that it's getting into the PGA North area? So that's, that's exactly what they're working on right now to identify. did Luke come so far south that it's getting into the PGA North area? So that's, that's exactly what they're working on right now to identify.
Mr. Mayor. Should we ask Liberty for any historical testing as well? Just have a baseline?
Yeah, we can ask. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment and I'm sorry, my phone was making, was talking. It was rude to you. I'm sorry. I had something come up on Facebook a week ago about an attorney doing class action lawsuit about PFAS and it was specifically addressed to Litchfield Park residents. So somewhere this is out and.
I'm sure there's plenty of attorneys who want to sue you.
Councilmember, there is, I think the, the class action lawsuit is kind of what else, you know, Liberty, there, my understanding is there's several entities getting together. And that might be part of it.
A question. Keith, if I'm on the big memory here, but recently the EPD has lowered the standard on PFAS, et cetera. I think it's roughly 97% of what's, of what's now banned. And what you're saying is that what's now banned is so small, it's almost unacceptable. So and also I think they have eight years to fix it. Utilities around the country are having this issue. It's huge expense for utilities around the country to approach this. So and I don't know, you may not know either, but if the old standard was still in place, would we be over that standard or would we be kosher? Is it, is it bad now? Because I assume it's because the standard was lower by 97%, but I don't know that for a fact.
Matthew, it's kind of a little bit of both. So they did lower it and then they lowered it to a point where that's the hard to detect and calculate. There's a rhyme and reason to it and it's not good enough for a lot of professionals. That's why they paused in the EPA collaboration with that. So they're kind of reevaluating, they're putting their heels in, figuring out what is, what actually can we say is good and good enough and then bad. I can tell you some of the readings that we got from that form that I got today would have positives and all the different limits that have been applied and taken back and applied. So there's seven, there's been nine, there's been four parts per million. We have a little bit of all that and some of those wells.
The really low standard is not, is not an effect. The final effect now is, and it's effective date was paused. So the problem is that we, you know, we, I'm sure we have water in the ground, groundwater, where it's over the old standard. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. One to your next report, Mr. Drousky.
Mr. Mayor, CIP updates. The information is in the packet. They'll be helping answer any questions, concerns, just abandon anything.
Just a comment. Can your maintenance program in the roads is, it, there was a huge amount of effort put into getting our roads several years, several, which probably started 15 years ago and probably took us five or six or seven years to get the raw, all the roads kind of caught up. And that 10-year maintenance program is not, has not been followed. Understanding there may have been questions about budgetary capacities or whatever. I didn't really understand that you were taking things like crack sealing and pothole, fixing potholes and not doing that because of expenditure limits. If we were, then it, it may have been a bad, a bad choice of what we traded, what things we traded off. It is, it is very important that the 10-year maintenance plan get back caught up. Because we don't want to end up losing these roads. We have a lot of roads now. If we get, let them get too bad, we're going to be faced with replacing a lot of roads that we should not have to do. That's very important.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the, the pavement management was put on hold. We had a budget capacity for Litchfield Square to finish that. Potholes and other asphalt repairs did continue on. Kyle and his guys did a lot of repairs. We had some other contractors, including Ait Gardner, who was our C Mar contractor for the square. They did a lot of repairs for us in and around Litchfield Square up on Fairway and some of their smaller streets. We had them do some work in Village as well. The last round was a year and a half ago when we Millen overlay all of Litchfield Road and that was a nearly $600,000 effort. So that took all and a little bit more of the HERF allocation for that year. And that was programmed into the tenure. Hoping to have a little bit more when we did that than might after it, which is kind of positive. Staff and I have worked together and in the council packet, we identified 97 segments over the last two years. It would have been kind of split 40, 45 and I think 52. And so we're gonna do those together and none of them are overlapping streets. So we can catch up on crack seal slurry. We have several streets identified for Millen overlay and some full pavement replacement. So we're going to get back on schedule and, and the goal is to try to get this work done before it gets too cold, putting that slurry or cracks down.
That's what I, what I'm, we should be doing that right now. And we're in a new, a new budget year, so we don't have that same limitation. It's nice and hot.
Yeah, definitely is.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is a comment. Keith, I believe you were presenter this afternoon at the Citizens Academy.
Fortunately, I was not. That was Kyle.
It was Kyle.
But I didn't give him some material.
Okay, okay. You did give us the stuff. Well, I, I got some great comments about the material that was given today. So you'll forward that on. It's, it's always amazing, the reports that you give and your ability to understand, I mean, the involve what you have with everything that's happening in the city, the reports you give to us are I think far more thorough than we have ever seen with what's happening in the city. So I really appreciate, you know, the information that you give to us.
Pleasure.
Mr. McClair, Kimballback Park. See, we're still out bid.
Sir, I sent the plans out to three contractors. I haven't heard from the third one yet. Heard from the second one today. Costs are coming in a bit high. There has been some spikes in concrete and asphalt and we are seeing the effects of that. Surprisingly, landscape is a very big commodity right now to do that. So we're a big number, bigger than estimated numbers to, because when we widen the street to do the parking, we have to do landscape repairs and, and move the, the sprinklers, some of the mains laterals. So that's a big number. The asphalt is coming in higher. We are hearing from our partners up on the hill, that they're asphalt, we should get to, so that it's corroborated. The three contractors, I am having look at it, are asphalt and concrete contractors. So they don't have to sub it out. So we're getting the best rates I think we can. I'm hoping that this third contractor comes in at a reasonable price so we can move forward. But right now they're in general 150,000 over, which is a big number for a small parking lot.
Yeah. Question, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Does that complete? Yes. Mr. Sir, all right. Thank you for your report. Approach of your report. Oh, no report.
Mr. Mayor.
You can give no report. That's fine.
You'll note in this month's packet, there is no special project update. I believe we'll be talking in more depth about the special products during the executive session.
So save you for last.
The best, yes.
All right. Magistrate Court report is in your packet. I don't know if anybody else noticed it, but the report to me is a lot easier to understand and maybe take something from.
I would ask the mayor, council on the court report, that's the first time you've seen it under our mill in a new format. So if there's any new light, we don't like, please feel smug.
Much cleaner. And it looks, to me, it's all, it's, it is a lot cleaner. That's good language, man. Okay, that, that takes us to our consent agenda. Items 8A through like F, if a member of the council wants to take anything off of the consent agenda for, for further discussion. If not, is there a motion to adopt this, since it's consent agenda as, as presented?
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Takes us to the business agenda. Litchfield Square Boulevard. Mr. Proch is back.
Waited, hold up, we didn't set up. Said you waited long enough and then we sit out.
I timed it perfectly.
Mr. Mayor has decided to have one and a half presentations instead of five. I'm here as much as I want. Possibly, can I, I'll wait for the PowerPoint to come up.
Any questions? Are you gonna, are you gonna have a presentation?
Yes, I will. Now, we're just, it's coming up in just a moment.
Okay.
Lovely. This is item 9A. This is a refresh of where we left off two months ago about parking options on Wiglong Boulevard. This is a collaboration of sorts between a number of CIP products that we have. An additional one we look to get feedback and direction on with you tonight as well as the developer initiated projects on the north side of the street. We'll talk about this in more detail and refresh everyone from earlier this summer. So the goal for tonight is to request council direction on option D. Last time we had A through C and now we have option D. And your authorization to bring forward a contract for design and engineering based on this option D. So just a, again, a refresher, our developer of lots 13 and 14 that surround City Hall as part of their improvements all along, along with Wood and Boulevard. All the off-site improvements, they're constructing 18 angled spaces on the north side of the street. We think we can marry up with that nicely with a number of the projects I've laid out here in this bulleted list. So that includes six angled spaces and I have a visual on the next slide, six angled spaces in front of your Verdi Shopping Center. That's a historic name for the Mahoney Restaurants. They're just east of Desert Avenue. We would paint in seven parallel spaces on Wiglong Boulevard. Those are in front of La Casa Linda. This is again, an update based on council direction and we met with the HOA representatives of La Casa Linda as well to get their feedback. It'd be the construction of 12 angled spaces at the dentist's office and 16 at Old Litchfield Road. Those are both already identified CIP projects. So we look to do this all in one fell swoop. That is a bit small. Let's see if I can help out in that situation. Maybe, maybe not. Okay. So what changed from last time to this time? The angled spaces are still on the north side right here. I'll show you. Those are the ones that the developer is preparing in to include. That first number is right here. Those are the ones in front of the Tier Ver shopping center. Here at the south side of Wiglong Boulevard, these are the ones already identified in the CIP as well as the ones down here. This is the old bus bay that we would look to convert into angled spaces. The last round of feedback was that parking along the south side of Wiglong would require a fairly significant change to the look, the appearance. There'd be a loss of trees, there'd be a loss of grass. There would be the need for additional metal screen walls in front of people's windows. And it was thought, and I don't want to speak for all of you, but it was thought to be too much in such a small space. What has changed is parallel parking instead. What this does is keeps the grass, keeps the trees, no modification of the curbs, no additional screen walls. But it certainly is lot less than the angled spaces. So you can look at it as a deducting from what you saw last time. The other way to look at this is it's still an increase over what's there today, which is nothing. So what this is, is seven parallel spaces. You'll notice a nice little red area right here in the middle as fire hydrants. And that is only between Inca and Esperance. Here for the east, there isn't some significant amount of room to do even one additional car. And having an parking space for one between Inca and desert seems a little foolish. I'm gonna jump ahead and come back to this real quick. This is an older photo, but I thought it looked best as far as the conversation. Then that hydrant, that's that mid-block is what you see in the foreground. So the parking stalls would be the parallel spaces between off-screen and about midpoint. What happens is that road tapers very badly, very much in. So I don't have that same curb just to keep putting cars there because the road is shifting, the curb is shifting. Again, we can look at some sort of modification of that, maybe fit a car, maybe two cars, but seems foolhardy in the sense of where people should and should not park. We'll back to the overhead. Ah, good. I'll zoom in here for you. The other thing that is pronounced with this is that you would have a dedicated true right turn lane onto Esperance. I can accomplish all this only with cuts to the median. That's what we kind of talked about last time. Fire department insists on having 20 feet on either side of that street because the fire truck has to close down one side of the street in case of accident. Close down one side of the street, 20 feet allows 10 feet for this way, 10 feet for that way. You can put both directions of travel on either side of that. We did this in a very similar manner in Litchfield Square. Those roads are 20 feet on either side of those center medians. Each one tells it does feel like that because we have the yellow strip on your left, we have the bike lanes on your right. Those are important to slow down, pinch in as much as we can. But we still allow vehicular traffic to go both ways in case of emergency. So that's, I know where we ended up as far as taking your feedback, working with the HOA and marrying up these different ideas to create as much parking as could make sense in this area. So what it ends up is, is 16 stalls over at the bus bay that we would be adding, a total of 25 on Wiglong Boulevard, the parallel spaces, the angled spaces on the south, the angled spaces north. And then the developer, we'd be adding 18 additional stalls. So quick math tells me 43, 61 stalls new, 60 and additional opportunities to park, additional opportunities to get people out of La Casa Linda's local streets. That being said, our recommendation is to pursue this new option D, we call it. And for you to direct staff to prepare a contract for consideration of design and engineering to do these additional stalls that would again marry up with the CIP projects into one larger project. I'd be happy answering questions.
Can you go back to the photo that you used? Yeah, that one. So right now we see in the area, area where the red arrowhead is at. What we've done, what we did years ago actually was to make that curb go out into the road to narrow the road and calm the traffic. So if we were to move that curb simply back to where it was originally, is there space in there for parallel park?
Mr. Mayor. Quite possibly, yes. I, I don't want to, I don't want to speculate, but if I were to take you up on that offer, I'd say that there would be an opportunity, probably six or seven spaces additionally, yes, that'd be accomplished by pulling that curb back to its original location. Do you think I see a right turn right there? So there, I'd say five or six, just in case.
It would seem to me that, you know, the whole idea is we're, we're taking as much as possible, the modifications that we made to Wiglong Boulevard to slow it down by narrowing the road. We're trying to take those modifications out so that we can now keep it slow, but because we're going to use it for parking. So it would make sense to me to look at that stretch also.
Yes, I can do so.
Any other comments or questions, Councilman Claire?
With this picture up, it looks like the, in the center median, the palm trees are, the median doesn't seem to be equidistant on both sides.
Because of the left-hand turn lane.
Because of the left-hand front. So are we shrinking? Yes, sir, in that area. So are you, are you talking about shrinking that median even further on that side or is that gonna be?
So Councilman McClair, all five of those means all have to be touched, adjusted, pulled back. There, I can't recall if I talked about it last time, but I'd be happy to talk about it again. I can't. I mean, I don't think it'd be wise of us to have the car meander through this corner. So essentially all of them are gonna get a haircut. Uh, through this quarter. So essentially, all of them are gonna get a haircut like me next year. But until then, all of them need to get a haircut on both sides of the medians in order to accept that twenty feet that the fire department fires.
Is there still gonna be left turn turn lane there?
Yes, I'm sorry. That wasn't clear. There's sufficient width to still include the left turn lane, but even the the belly of that will need to come in. Left lane will shift as well.
And how far on the north side of those islands? Will be reducing the size of the mediums.
So, uh, right here, the first of all, it's about eight feet of reduction on each direction. And along with that, it means, you know, the sprinkler heads will need to adjust, the PVC will need to be replaced. And then here on the north side. Uh, it's talked about, but I apologize for not speaking aloud on this thought. We can't have a half the angle parking sticking beyond the curb. You know, if you're in Litchfield Square, the curb is where the end of the parking stall is. In this instance, uh, the spaces extend beyond existing curbs. The curb will need to be rebuilt. Uh, wider in order to tuck the car in.
At the end of the day, the palm, the palm trees will be centered in the in the median that we end up with.
Yes, back to its previous look and feel, correct, and no trees will be harmed in this exercise.
I just wanna make a comment that was really nice of Randy to entertain the comments from HOA. They felt very listened to and heard, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mister Vice Mayor.
When do we anticipate the need for this? Is this for? Possible future need, or is there something we're trying to do right now?
Sure. So Vice Mayor, it's. When we've had our special events, we've had our drone photography that shows proliferation of cars everywhere. And as development continues to occur, construction fencing goes up. The the lots that we're using as temporary car storage are gonna get reduced. Uh, with lot thirteen and fourteen directly surrounding City Hall. If we are as successful as we hope to be and you see that next month or the development agreement, the final development plans. And the sale of that land, in essence, the fence could go up to the following day. And that is further reductions of our parking. It's something I'm looking at Tricia extensively with for special events to. Try and put cars somewhere. That's a long way to answer your question as far as. For development pressures in the square, not soon. For the times of year that we have events and our events keep getting bigger and grander and more frequently. This could address the immediate concern of the residents of La Casa Linda that are experiencing heartache during those weekend events.
So is this a temporary fix until we get a parking garage, or is this a permanent situation?
Thank you for the question. We, if we are as lucratively successful as we hope, when the square is done. Every on-street parking spot, every service parking stall, every parking garage is full of cars. So it's something that was, you know, that what he had discussed with all of you many years ago, read through the notes. It's still designed to be short on parking. So this is addressing the shortage. We think there's other opportunities, but this is the closest and easiest fix we feel on our roads in our right of way. To add to the surrounding area without impacting lives, quite frankly.
There were plans showing two parking garages. We've talked about now one parking garage and maybe extending that. With an addition, maybe a second at a later time, or maybe two at the same time.
Yes.
Are we talking about now just one parking garage total? Or are we still looking at possibly a seven?
Sure. So Vice Mayor, last month, or because June, last time we met, there was council direction to do a phased approach. So we have started the conversation with the consultant to prepare the contracts for your consideration of phase one. Uh, two hundred eighty-five stalls. And then when we are as successful as we plan to be. At a later date, we will come back to you with the second part of that garage. The second part of that design and engineering to then add on to that garage to get up to about four hundred and fifty stalls stuff. So yes, we do plan to build the first phase when needed and the second phase when.
And no, no other parking garage.
No, uh, in in those conversations we had. I think in February and March, we looked at a number of different alternatives. All the other alternatives would take away saleable lands. Because they either they impacted all of the squares, as it were. The nice thing about the Scout Lodge parcel is the opportunity not to encumber any of these saleable land. Pieces of land with a garage. So in essence, all the remaining sites could develop a hundred percent with buildings. Very minimal parking and we can take that burden outside those parcels into the Scout Lodge person.
And how does your timing work with? The Scout Lodge Parking Garage. Sitting where the Scout Lodge. May be moved or rebuilt or demoed or.
It's a good question.
It was in your report, so I, yeah.
It's a good question, Mr. Russner. I would tell you that from my standpoint that when we see three buildings going up, which of course is Akamalso. Uh, regardless of the corner, I'd be putting a garage up. Um, to Randy's point, what he was just saying, on the properties that are left available, which are five, six, seven, Litchfield Road parcels. We don't know what's gonna get built there. Those might be two stories, might be three. If they're free, you could need additional parking, which you don't know. It's crystal ball. But coming back to the question, sir, I would plan to be building the Scout Lodge Garage when you see those three buildings going up. And I'm gambling, if if everything lines up, I think you'll go along the corner. I think you'll see Porter break ground around Christmas this year. It it needs to get done. Um, one point on this also to always remember is that for every spot you can build on the street. It's space you don't have to build in garage and they're much cheaper. Garage spaces are thirty-five thousand apiece. At our last calculation, we're playing about about ten grand a spot on these, is that right?
Yeah, it was.
You know, table list of that, so on this thirty-five. But you still need garage, of course, it's just more space that she.
If the, if all this is successful, these first three buildings and the property becomes more valuable. It's left to be sold. Then it may also be easier to negotiate with developers on including parking garages in the buildings that they build. So there's a lot of different moving parts that that have to all come together, all to be determined.
I I hate to see any of the grass anyway. They attempted once upon a time to put islands down. Wiglong. East of the flagpole. And we were told by ADWR or somebody. That we couldn't use water for that to do that.
It's actually east of Neil.
Yes, and is it possible to take some of this grass rights that were given up? And to apply that someplace else like east of Neil?
I don't think so, but we can certainly have staff confirm that.
Who was it that told us we couldn't do it, or we tried to do it before? Was it?
A W.
It was ADWR, yeah. Part of the water resources.
That's, that, it it is a funny thing because we have put in, we have put in grass, so.
Yes.
But we haven't asked.
We built parks, you know.
It's a, we expanded the grass obviously there, but we, you know, we did it for public safety so that the. We can calm the traffic on the streets. But it's, you know, if if, you know, while it's not desirable to lose grass, we really do need to maximize the area where people park. It's. Even just putting in the three buildings will exacerbate our parking problems when we have our vessels.
And one more question, if I might.
Yes.
If you go back to that picture. That left turn lane on the there, is that really necessary? Or can that be parking? Somebody's trying to make a left turn, they're not gonna block the street, they're gonna pull over between those islands. Unless there's three or four cars backed up, I guess on the festival, trying to get onto, is that desert?
Mister Vice Mayor, it is a desert avenue. I would really the, put my head together with Keith to think about that idea. The the comparison with, I guess, Old Lishell Road having that sort of situation is that. At the end of those center island parking stalls, the median re-extends to basically contain. Maybe that's an idea there. They also have a stop control. Uh, to ensure that everyone's aligned before making those turns at Old Lishell. And Wiglong and Old Lishell and Honeysuckle, where you have those interactions. I, we we can look into it. I I don't want to say with confidence that that's possible, but we could try it.
And it doesn't need to be done with this process because you can always. Use paint, fix it later.
Certainly.
What do you think about the Honeysuckle we had before we stopped coming off Honeysuckle because? The middle parking created visibility issues for people coming out of Honeysuckle. So there's a lot of nearness, it's all the time. So if you do, I said can't, probably have different point, great stop.
Uh, Mister Mayor, it it is our recommendation to provide us direction if if we are. Close on this with the modification to adjust that southern landscape curve. To increase the amount of parallel spaces, we'd certainly take that direction. And pursue the design and engineering contract for your consideration. That's that would be our request, let's see.
One more question.
Goes from Claire.
Uh, I heard Lisa say you spoke to the HOA. What was their feedback on added parking?
Councilmember Claire, the the initial blush that we brought before you had very similar feedback as far as. In undesigned for that amount of impacts along their frontages. Uh, I think there was, uh, there's commentary made in a lot of different directions, but. This is in a direct result to their requests as far as no impacts to the grass, no impacts to the trees, no impact to the curb, no need for screen walls. Basically, uh. Formalize where to put cars. The other thing that this does, and I have not mentioned yet, is with its design the way it is. Uh, a good steward of driving a motor vehicle would know that these corners are unparkable. And parallel spaces are defined. By making these unparkable, especially with this right turn lane as well, we're eliminating the bad apples of the group. By not having people all the way to the curb in this direction, that direction, not blocking fire hydrant. So that we can, to Keith's point, avoid the omissions because we're pulling cars away from dangerous spots.
So just you've gotten basically their blessing. On this.
I've gotten their direction on this. I've blessed us. I would not, blessing. Uh, I would not want to say blessing because I have not re-presented this to them. So it's something we can certainly take back with the additional direction of of the desert. Uh, update and reaffirm the stance in the feedback.
Yes.
Are you not by putting the parking by those condos moving? The traffic farther away from those condos?
Uh, Mister Vice Mayor, through traffic, yes.
Cause right now, I mean, they're built right up against the sidewalk. I mean, close to the sidewalk. We're now moving the traffic eight, eight or so farther away from.
I would, I dare say fourteen feet if you include the bike lane. So yes, it's significant.
Isn't that a benefit to them?
Yes, it is. It also, uh, yes, that's part of the benefits as well.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If that is our motion to direct staff. That we are in favor of option B for on-street on-street parking options on Wiglong Boulevard. With the modification possibly to the area between. A lot of the pictures, Inca and Desert. So, is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
And is that with the understanding that we tell these guys to preserve as much grass as possible?
Yes, right now it's a concept.
Yeah.
That needs to go to engineering and actually decide how how wide do these medians really have to be.
And not make them any extra wide, but attempt to preserve the grass and make it legal and usable.
I mean, we don't want it any wider than it has to be, mostly because we don't want to encourage traffic to pass.
Yes, okay.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
I just, I was at the meeting and the major concern that the HOA had was losing the green belt. The of grass in front of the property would leave us with parking spaces and a sidewalk.
Right.
Right, which would made it really kind of a blight. And we didn't want there to be such a dramatic difference in the the way the north side of the street looked versus the south side.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion carries. You have direction. Next item is a discussion of possible amendment to the development agreement for Litchfield Square lots one and two.
Mister Mayor, on this side, I would recommend we discuss executive session and vote on it.
I'm sorry, are you gonna, we want to wait till after the executive sessions?
Yes, I would recommend that.
Alright. So then there is, there is a need for executive session under the items, really it's all the items with the exception maybe of A. Uh, is there a motion to go into executive session? So this.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we're in executive session. So we will clearly go from the room and session back to order. So just we'll get it, get ourselves turned back on. So we're good to go? Okay. We have one item of business left, that is to, excuse me. Potentially approve an extension related to the development agreement for Litchfield Square lots one and two. Are there any, are there any questions about the the extension that has been recorded? Staff want to just quickly summarize what it, what the extension is?
Yes, sir. Mister Mayor, we would request that if you given a three-month extension. And that staff have discretion to give another three-month discretion or extension if needed for a total of six months.
Okay, any questions by council?
So.
That's even better. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion.
Upstate.
You abstain? Okay. Uh, so the, make sure, make sure that the minutes reflect that the Vice Mayor abstained from this. From the discussion of the item and also from voting on it. And on the item still passes with a vote of five to zero.
Did Councilmember James vote?
I don't know, I suspect Councilman James is probably gone. Is he on? Alright, Councilman James, we need your vote. No, not there. Sorry, we can't get through to Councilman James, so we'll take it as a five to zero vote. We're all finished with business, so please.